Hey, good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, August 27th, 2025. It's 9:05 a.m. My name is Ty Minter, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier to my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus to his left, and Commissioners Carolyn McKee and Rachel Grant, participating virtually, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker, present in the boardroom. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Thurston County YouTube channel within 24 hours while we work through some tech issues. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. And the first item up is Comprehensive Plan Review Climate.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ashley Rye, Director of Community Planning and Development, joined today for our sixth series of seven 30-minute briefings, all appropriate as planned, by our Community Planning Manager Derek Jay. I did want to highlight, in addition to our one-page resource sheet, you do have a few extra items in your packet. This is a big topic and it's a new topic for our comprehensive plan, and so we do have additional resources that highlight what greenhouse gas emissions are, how they fit into conversations about climate mitigation, as well as what is climate resiliency? And what are those additional items that we've been working on as a county to address those? So feel free to use that as a resource sheet as you're talking to constituents. And if you have any questions, you can always reach out to Leonard and we can arrange a deeper dive session. So what is the climate component? It is a new one in our comprehensive plan, and it does cover two main categories in alignment with new state laws. The first one is mitigation of greenhouse gases. This is largely covered in the narrative of the climate chapter. And it's focused really on like transportation, housing. And when I say housing, it's not the number of units, it's what kind of energy is your house using? And you know, how much insulation do you have and heating and cooling and things of that nature? On this particular topic, as you're probably aware, the Thurston Climate Action Team has been really engaged since they've been the ones who are really behind the regional work around the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And we have spent a significant amount of resources addressing their questions and their concerns. And you'll see a lot of that work reflected in the chapter. In addition to climate mitigation, this chapter, as well as many of the chapters in our rural comprehensive plan, looks at resiliency. Think of resiliency as the umbrella of all of our climate planning efforts. It really encompasses how the county prepares for and adapts for climate impacts into the future. And what that means for us as a county is supporting our farmers as they face wetter winters and drier summers, helping our foresters manage pests, which are becoming a bigger issue, preparing our rural communities for more frequent wildfires, and addressing challenges related to sea level rise, rural water availability, or flooding in our lowland areas. So when you look at the map on our one-page reference sheet, you can definitely see why resiliency would matter so much for our rural communities. So, next slide.
It's fine.
It's fine.
Do you advance this slide? Oh, it's frozen.
Frozen in time. Oh.
One second till we start it.
It's also why we have copies. We do have copies. Thank you, Amy and Brandy. As we've done with the other briefings, we like to set the stage. Why do we even have a climate chapter in our comprehensive plan? And why are we talking about it as a community? As you're probably already aware, you can tell from the garden in your backyard, if you have one, the climate is already changing. It's going to continue to change. And only as a community in a region can we really take action to address those changes and adapt. We know, at least from the studies that have been done, that in the last hundred years, temperatures have risen 2.4 degrees and by 2100, wow, it's weird to say 2100. We are projecting that we may see an average of 62 additional days a year above 90 degrees. We know summer rainfall is lessening, but we're getting a lot more winter rain and seeing increased flooding impacts. We know that sea levels are going to rise. And as we already know from even recent events, rainier wildfires are going to become more common and more intense and require more active management to address wildfire risk. Could breathe again.
Possibly.
Do you want me to address the handouts or do we? Oh, we got it. Or, oop, it skipped one.
Yeah, it's probably going to advance.
Okay. So, as I mentioned, the climate chapter is a new requirement under House Bill 1181. We are part of a group of jurisdictions in 2025, the first in the state to adopt these new climate elements. The requirements under state law is that the changes that you see sort of baked into our policies would result in overall reduction of greenhouse gases without shifting the burden to another community. Don't want to necessarily shift our greenhouse gas reduction responsibilities to Pierce County, Lewis County, Mason, et cetera. We also have to ensure that we aren't creating or worsening impacts to our overburdened or vulnerable communities. And as you think about rural county, that might look differently than as you think about more urban areas. And we also are going a step further and ensuring that any step, I'm sorry, that we're prioritizing reductions and prioritizing support to those overburdened and/or vulnerable communities. Do you have anything to add on that note?
I think the only really thing to add is we did base a lot of this work from its foundation was in a vulnerability assessment that we did to start off all of this work. So we looked at different kind of sectors across the county in different areas to identify high-risk areas and high-risk issues. It was like human health, wildfire, those types of things.
Yeah, if you think of it in the context of a map, places like Grand Mound, like the belt between Rochester, Grand Mountain, Nino, is at higher risk of wildfires, heat impacts. And then if you think about the Niskewalley Valley, because it's so, you know, it's a lowland area, being at higher risk of flooding or sea level rise. So that's sort of what the vulnerability assessment looked at so that we could highlight as a county where we might want to put additional resources to help mitigate those impacts.
Let's go quick. From a structural standpoint, you mentioned a chapter, but then they always use this word element. Is there a meaning to the word? Like, you have to have a climate element. What does that mean? Does it mean it's like one chapter that addresses climate or is it has to be laced all the way through the plan? Or what do they mean by element?
You had different options as a community. So you could integrate it into a number of different chapters or you could create one chapter that really housed a lot of the climate. I would say, very similar to other communities, we have kind of a hybrid. You know, you've got the climate chapter, which has a lot of the background narrative and explanation around climate planning, but then you're going to have policies sprinkled throughout all the other chapters really relating to climate, sort of tying back to it. So here in Thurston County, where do our greenhouse gas emissions come from? It's probably not surprising that it's transportation, as well as the energy our buildings use. You'll see up on the chart there that tree and canopy loss is also a contributor. I do want to highlight that the work that was done by our consultant looked at tree loss countywide. A lot of this is in urban areas and UGA areas. So they did not parse out canopy loss within like our north county cities and urbanized areas from our rural areas. So it is overstating, at least for rural county, what that tree canopy loss looks like. If you drill down into agriculture, it's only about, I think it's 2% to 3%, it's on one of the reference sheets there, that the agriculture industry is contributing. I will say this board in recent past actually has been a leader in trying to incentivize our agriculture operators to adopt climate smart practices. There are recent code updates that provide a streamlined permitting pathway for any farmer who wants to install solar panels or who wants to, you know, switch to no-till farming and things of that nature. So, good job Thurston County. Let's see here. So this is kind of the full list of the new state law and agency guidance. So we have done a lot of local work in these areas, and that includes the Thurston Climate Adaptation Plan, the Climate Mitigation Plan, our recently adopted Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Flood Hazard Mitigation Plan that's going to be coming before you here within next month, and the Thurston County Vulnerability Assessment. So that's sort of the framework or the foundation that we used in developing the climate chapter. And then, of course, we also have all the new state agency guidance coming out of the House Bill 1181. Now, I'm going to kick this one over to Derek since he has been the one really at all of these tables, whether it was the Chair of the Planning Commission or on the other side as our Community Planning Manager.
Thank you. So I will say that this was one of the most deeply engaged in parts of the whole process. We spent probably the most time, well, easily, the most time of any of the chapters or elements on climate-specific engagement. So we started this off, this was before I was at the county, I was on the Planning Commission, but there were two community forums that we held. We also worked really closely with the Thurston Climate Action Team. There was a community assembly in February. Then we also participated in their climate mitigation forum. We also, we did a lot of one-on-one coordination with the Thurston Climate Action Team. We spent a lot of time one-on-one. And then most of the work that we did was really, we did a very, very, very deep dive into comparing the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan with the comprehensive plan to look for gaps and look for opportunities where we might want to either pull pieces over or supplement the work in the comprehensive plan. We spent four Planning Commission sessions on that. We built out this big giant matrix. And as Ashley mentioned before, the climate element houses some of the climate actions, but the whole plan has climate-related actions in it, goals, policies, and actions throughout the whole plan. So we had, I think it was probably 10, 12 pages of eight and a half by 11 crosswalk, where we went through every single one of the actions in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And we found where they aligned with the current policies, and we highlighted gaps. We made some recommendations about things we could change. We worked with Rebecca Harvey. And we also, we built that so that the community could give us feedback, whether or not the gaps were too big or things we might want to add. So we were able to really efficiently and effectively take that input. And we spent four work sessions with the Planning Commission, walking through every single line. So it was a very, very in-depth engagement.
I'll just say, thank you Derek so much for going over that. Because oftentimes, when items come here before commissioners, sometimes the public doesn't always realize that getting here has meant there's been a whole lot of other touchpoints and work that have been done. In the area of our CPED department, especially in this comp plan, the amount of time and commitment that volunteers are making, like the Planning Commissioners and the staff that are doing those touchpoints, it's just to be commended in our public process for input and engagement. And all those touchpoints of noticing that information so that people could weigh in, surveys that they could respond to. It's not easy doing that level of work. And I understand that sometimes those were long Planning Commission meetings. And if you process through a lot of information, I know because I've driven by this building sometimes and seen staff still milling around after Planning Commission meeting. Because there's the meeting and then there's the follow-up that people are having as they are learning new information. But I appreciate you going over that. And I think it's great for the public to know that Thurston County is walking through transparently different processes and highlighting information and with stakeholders, et cetera.
I'll just add really quickly, strong commendation for our Planning Commission for taking this on with the level of intention that they put into it and really looking at the work that had been done already in this community through the lens of what our rural communities need, what does equity look like for our rural communities? And really trying to just take a slightly different perspective, since this is the first time that as a county, we will have a climate element. So what sets us apart and what can we do that maybe the cities aren't as well-positioned to do because they're not representing the rural areas as the county is?
And just to throw that in, I mean, I'm not the only commissioner, but I personally have had multiple sessions with constituents and multiple follow-ups with staff. So I mean, that wasn't even on your list, but there's been other work done through commissioners and staff and constituents to try to work through these issues. I went with these guys the other day about this and I appreciate your attention.
Yeah, that's a great point, Chair, Vice Chair, because I know that that's also something the public doesn't necessarily see is commissioners engaging with their professional-level staff as is appropriate and should be. As you are getting background information, constituents bring you questions, good questions, their needed questions, and then we work together to figure out, is it something that we missed? New information that we have to process or other things that we can provide clarity? So we know that CPED is doing a lot. There's a lot of transition taking place. We're excited, Derek, that you're here. And the attitude that we appreciate it a lot.
Do you want to highlight the big themes?
Sure.
That you've heard as the Chair of the Planning Commission?
So both before and after. So one of the major themes that we heard, and this is really where we spent a lot of our time, was on integrating the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan into the comprehensive plan. That was a really, really prominent theme. We also heard a lot about wildlife corridors and thinking about kind of new approaches and strategies for managing forests along the lines of community forests. We heard a lot about sea level rise. We also, we've had a lot of recommended actions for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And then we also heard about impacts to wildlife habitat and migration patterns.
And most of the changes have been incorporated into the draft that the Board will see. There, of course, are going to be outstanding questions. You know, we're at the Planning Commission, made one recommendation, but you know, maybe Thurston Climate Action Team or another stakeholder work group would like a different recommendation. And that's really what we will all be weighing in on is the policymaking body. But no big items are left on the table. We really are down to kind of small, like, wording in a few policies rather than these big questions that have come up in some of the other chapters.
We've seen large reductions in daylight between the community and the comprehensive plan.
But we do like ending these on, where is Thurston County already leading the way? It's always good to acknowledge the great work that is being done and then building off of that as we move into the future. As I mentioned, you know, we're one of the first jurisdictions that's even going to have a climate element. And you know, that climate element is, it's just sort of continuing the county on the pathway we've already been on due to all of our regional planning efforts. But up there, you'll see the list, and I would say, resiliency and adaptation is really, has been a strong focus over the last few years and will continue to be. And that's where we're seeking a lot of grant funds. So watershed-scale adaptive planning, specifically working with our tribes on that, climate-informed stormwater management. We have a climate modeler on our team that is really pushing the boundaries of what local climate modeling looks like. Habitat protection and forestry, we're the only county that has a habitat conservation program that we're implementing. And then also, you know, we weren't successful, but putting in a large-scale grant to help expand the Niskewalley community forest. We've got also, as I mentioned, a lot of incentives we've already put in place for agriculture-related climate strategies. And some of those is wonky as allowing commercial biochar facilities, which we hope is sort of a next-gen alternative for farmers to use or want. So in addition, even the way we approach the comprehensive plan update and trying to put equity at the center, it's like, you know, how do we set the table in our community to even talk about these climate issues and how they can reflect it here as well as how it can influence the areas? Building off of all the previous work that's been done, we didn't start from scratch. There'd be no reason to do that. And then, of course, building off of all the relationships we already have in place with that regional climate collaborative. And then finally, a piece that sets us apart is the implementation plan, which includes concrete action items. And this is where the Planning Commission really spent a lot of their time. If you're going to sign the county up for action items and we have limited resources, how do we make sure those action items are pragmatic, strategic, and really focused in the areas where we can make a difference? I don't know if you have any more to add on that. I know you spent a lot of time with the Planning Commission.
Yeah, the Planning Commission really was very deliberate about walking through the plan. They also looked at it from a perspective of, you know, the county probably can't do everything we could ever hope to do. So trying to push forward recommendations that really reflect where we think we could make a strategic impact.
So we mentioned no big ones. Of course, there's always going to be small ones and we're happy to engage on those and provide additional context or information. And then, finally, we're through six out of seven. This has been amazing to be able to spend this time with the board and walking through all the different elements of the comp plan. Our Planning Commission has a special meeting that they scheduled tonight. They might be passing along the comp plan to you all tonight. It might take one or two more meetings if it doesn't happen. But we do have our final session scheduled as a lead-up to that on September 17th to walk through housing. And I know there have been some questions that you've raised, Commissioner Fornier, and we're baking that into that presentation. And so, any questions that you have between now and then, please check in with Leonard and I'll be to support.
If you'd like any follow-ups. So much, Ashley.
I'm sorry, Leonard, what did you say?
Oh, if there's any need for follow-up meetings, we're happy to facilitate that. We know that these topics are really important and you'll be hearing from constituents. So anything that you need, just let us know.
Thank you.
I actually have a question. Where can we see the vulnerability assessment that you all completed?
We could share it.
Okay, that would be great.
I think it's on the website, but we're happy to share a link because there's a lot of stuff on that website at this point.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate it. I also was wondering, you kind of mentioned like one of the vulnerable areas that were identified in that assessment was the Grand Mound area. And I know we're looking at, you know, the Grand Mound UVA. It's one of our places that we're looking at developing. And how will we, like, is the comprehensive plan going to address how we mitigate some of those vulnerabilities in the Grand Mound area? And what would that look like as we move forward if we might not have capacity for like compliance and oversight?
Yeah, I mean, I think there are.
You mentioned, there's a belt of like prairie land that burns. Like she's mentioning, it's vulnerable to like grass fires.
Right, yeah. Yeah, but like when we, they can spread really fast. And if we're looking at developing in the Grand Mound area, then I'm just wondering, like, will those mechanisms for mitigation be included in the comprehensive plan or?
Yeah, and I would say what you'll see in the comprehensive plan are more higher-level policies. What it looks like on the ground is us partnering, like right now, with Thurston Conservation District that got a grant for a wildfire resiliency plan. So we're partnering with them to help with outreach, help landowner preparedness, things of that nature. And so it's really just looking at the strengths of the individual organization. In this case, Thurston Conservation District has those landowner, direct landowner relationships because they're our primary technical service provider to our rural areas. And so they've been collaborating with us as well as the Emergencies in Heat Management Team. And so it's just really building on those partnerships. But the wildfire resiliency plan, they've done a lot of work particularly in South County.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
We should that link to Amy. We'll make sure we get that.
And we can do both. We'll highlight Thurston Conservation District's work too.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
I think Carolyn.
Sorry.
Thank you. Can you stop sharing the screen, please? Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. You know, when talking about like that regional collaboration, right? I'm just wondering, what does that look like? And I know that we're a little bit different, right, than the rest of the jurisdictions in terms of the areas that we're covering and how we're more rural. But I'm just wondering, in this piece, like, how are we collaborating with the rest of the jurisdictions? Where are they at in this piece of their plan? And so just kind of wanted to hear from Derek or Ashley on that.
Yeah, well, for the North County area, we've got the Regional Climate Collaborative. And so we've been participating in that, specifically Rebecca Harvey. And they have had, I think, two, if not three, meetings focused on the comprehensive plan updates of the jurisdictions, Olympia, Tumwater, Lacey, as well as us. And the forums that we participated in by invitation of Thurston Climate Action Team were made up of those same jurisdictions. So really trying to create spaces for our community to come and engage on all climate planning efforts in North County rather than having to go to four separate open houses and tracking all these things. So we helped coordinate that with Paris McCloskey when he was working with Thurston Climate Action Team. The partnerships in South County look a little bit different. They are focused more on things like wildfire, I'm sorry, wildfire resiliency, supporting our ag and forestry operators. And so those partnerships have largely been with our Thurston Conservation District and all of our conservation efforts, like our prairie conservation efforts. So it's just going to have a different flavor. And so that has involved, you know, how do we get more of those climate-smart ag practice out on the ground? Trying to go after money for causture projects, funding for a forester. So Thurston Conservation District, for the first time in years, has their own forester on staff. And so we've been developing those relationships to provide more like small-scale forestry operator management plan support. So it really depends on sort of what community or what area of the county you're looking at. But if you have specific questions, happy to sort of map out what that regional collaboration looks like.
There was engagement, I learned on Friday, with the Shahuless Basin Partnership at a June meeting that I missed. But we kind of, there was input and then feedback and discussion at last week's meeting about those stakeholders and what input they wanted to give back to Thurston County and Lewis and Grace Harbor on comp plan elements related to watershed planning.
Yeah, so we, that's a, thank you for raising that. We've been participating in the Shahuless Basin Partnership. We've also been actively attending all the Niskewalley River Council meetings. And there's a lot of climate planning happening in the Niskewalley River Valley. And so, yeah, it really is dependent upon the community. And what we've, what we have tried to do is show up where the community is already at rather than creating our own spaces and just adding another meeting on top of everyone's busy schedule. And I think that's been effective at trying to reach a much more broad spectrum of people in this comp plan update.
And because climate issues are so kind of ubiquitous and integrated throughout all of the work that we do, it's going to really depend on a specific thing that we're working on, like where the right venue is and who we're working with. So it's happening in a lot of places, even if it's not like the Regional Climate Collaborative.
Thank you. You know, part of that was also like with our tribal partners, right? And you know, how are we collaborating with them? But you know, I've heard a couple of. And, you know, how how are we collaborating with them? But, you know, I've heard a couple of, you know, groups where they are their partners and and so, okay. I do have a couple more questions, but I know we have a big discussion up, so I would probably be reaching out. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to the next topic.
Thanks.
Okay, item two is budget update. We have budget team here by Summer Miller, so get set up. Thank you. As the budget team is getting set up, just want to provide a huge thank you for the ongoing work. We were here two weeks ago, and the amount of work that goes into the presentations that you're doing, in addition to all the development of the 2627 budget. This is a busy time of the year without these presentations. But your commitment to walking the commissioners through this information and as well as all of our budget staff out in our departments and offices are doing a lot of work. They're working through the dynamics of TC Connect. They're working through the uncertainty of the situation. So just a significant thank you for the ups and downs. It's it's hard when there are some unknowns and I know that that can cause a level of anticipation of what's going to happen. But we really do appreciate the coming together. And our commitment to commissioners is to bring this information timely. We've been talking about this since the end of the last calendar year. And it's always tougher when it's bad news. It's a little bit easier when you learn that, like, coming out of the pandemic, you're getting ARPA funding, our CARES Act funding. Because we all know in government, there's no shortage of needs. And so you start to look at how do you apply dollars to needs. But when you're looking at, because of the changing economic landscape and due to no fault of anybody's revenues flattening, expenditures going up, inflation, et cetera, it's tough for an organization to work through that. So this is just an acknowledgement to all our leaders, all our staff, the budget team at this table for your hard work and dedication working this through. And so that I'll pass over to Summer.
Thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth, sir. I also would like to thank the board for your patience with us as we've been bringing these to you throughout this year. And again, just really big thanks to my team. You know, it's it has been incredibly demanding on our team as well as everyone across the county, right? We're working through a lot of challenges, a lot of difficult decisions we know are in front of you. We're dealing with a system that has challenges regularly. We're working as a new team and we're learning a new way to bring the budget forward. And we are aware that the rest of this year is going to be quite difficult, and we are here for that challenge and to bring you the most up-to-date and most comprehensive transparent information that we can as we move forward. We appreciate your support, and we appreciate the county manager's kind words. Thank you.
And at any time, commissioners, if there's information in these presentations that you need more information, please let us know, and we will work to get pull that together. One of the things that I've seen take place through this process is the budget team is redefining some of its key tools. How they pull information together, how they work with departments and offices. And I see an exciting new approach. But when you're trailblazing and you're cutting through some of the jungles undergrowth, it can be extremely taxing. So this is just a special recognition to our three budget analysts that have been doing a lot of the trailblazing in these conversations and working with our department staff. Be looking at projections and worksheets and formulas to make sure that everything's adding up. Appreciate that. Without further ado, hand over, you want to walk us through the presentation?
Yes, sir. So Summer Miller, Budget and Finance Manager in the Commissioner's Office, Tiff West is with us, Jennifer Smith, Dolly Offensekka, and Karen has chosen to stay upstairs to work on some ARPA reporting. I'm sure you all know, we also have some challenges with that due to the untimely departure of our Diana. So she's working hard on that upstairs. So this is, I believe, our seventh presentation of this year on your general fund budget. It is the third in the month of August. Doesn't seem like three in August. Seems like we've had a whole year this month, but can we move that? If you don't mind. Yes, please. Thank you. Okay, so our objectives today are to provide an overview of the county's budget and fiscal principles as they were established in Resolution 15932. We will be asking the board for a motion to disallow any fiscal year 2025 budget amendments or any off-cycle funding request that may negatively impact the general fund budget. We do plan to report on current and planned general fund reductions that are consistent with our previous presentations and strategic directions. And then outline the process and timeline for planning the levy lid lift measure, including potential action under House Bill 2015. Okay, so Resolution 15932, adopting Thurston County budget and fiscal principles. Thurston County Board of Commissioners first adopted its budget and fiscal principles in 2008 to establish a consistent framework for financial planning and resource management. In 2020, the principles were updated to strengthen and guide the development and administration of the countywide budget. There's an excerpt that I have here from Exhibit A of that resolution that states that the Board of County Commissioners will strive to attain a two-month ending fund balance in the Thurston County General Fund. Thereafter, unless the ending fund balance exceeds a two-month operating reserve, Thurston County will prepare annual operating budgets that are balanced to forecasted revenue and are consistent with approved long-range strategic goals. So the purpose of this presentation is to stick with the words of this resolution.
And and special thanks to the chair twofold, one for flagging this prospect, two for being part of the board to actually put this fiscal measure in a resolution that is that is board direction. And so under this resolution and board direction, that's the direction that the county manager and the budget team will will continue to work on budget forward for 2627.
I just would add that, like, it was just sort of the big deal when we did this, and Rob and Campbell and I worked together on it. But then weirdly, it never actually came. So there's some language there missing where it said, basically said, we will strive to attain two-month funding by 2023. Because remember, we're in 2020. So we weren't at two-month fund balance. We were way below. So the goal was to give us three years to build that up and then hold us to a balanced budget unless we fall below. Well, immediately, we got like federal relief money and our fund balance was way above the two-month balance. So it like, we never really had to worry about this limitation because in way less than the three-year ramp up, we had the two-month fund balance and more and more and more.
Issue disappeared.
Disappeared. And so it's only now this year where this is now like in front of us and operative because it's never, it hasn't applied to 2020. Yeah.
See, that, what's confusing about that to me when you say that is that, so you guys took ARPA funding and then just put it in the general fund?
Um, there was a
It's two different things. And so like, like, when I think of like the way we bound, like, you think about two-month ending fund balance in the general fund, general fund's just always this the same amount, like you don't add other revenue sources to it, right?
It was an unusual situation. There were like certain monies that were that were had, you know, really strict limits. And then there were, there was a lost revenue calculation where the the board could, the budget team, they can explain it better than me. But you can sort of look at like all the ways that that the pandemic was affecting revenue and then basically do a calculation and you had a choice to do it one way or the other. But, you know, of course, you're going to look at which way is most advantageous. And yeah, some of it did go into the general fund. But it was like compensation for like revenue we weren't getting from other places theoretically.
Right.
I mean, it worked differently for every jurisdiction. Some were hit harder than others.
And the other component is in from 2020, 2023, the uncertainty of the economy. Economists' compasses were like spinning. Folks didn't understand what was going to happen. So the projections that were built in, we, there was a tremendous amount of pressure on the commissioners not to be overly conservative on the projection for the revenue coming in. So they they place certain projections in place and some other, there are other pressures that go even higher than that. Then when projections started to underperform, the percentages that we put in, that is what created some of the issue that we have today.
You're right.
We get confused. I mean, I was the budget, I was the chief. In 2020, I was a budget chief of DSHS, right? So, you know, I went through this process myself with my own budget. And so where I am still struggling to understand how the decisions were made here, you know, I guess that's the questions I'm having, and we can talk, we can talk about it later. But I guess that that was confusion to me because for me, it's, you know, general fund is local dollars. So local dollars are always on one line item. And then ARPA dollars are on a different line item. So it'd be like any COVID-related funding. But I'm understood, what I think I'm hearing you guys say is that based on the fact that we were able to bring in ARPA dollars and backfill in certain areas, that freed up some of our general of our general fund money, producing kind of an inflated revenue. That's what I think I'm hearing you say.
Some of it, I mean, some of it went directly, but and again, we understood that, like, you couldn't just spend, like, let's say you got, I don't know, let's come up with number 25 million. We knew we couldn't just spend 25 million on ongoing needs because this is 25 million of ongoing money. So it was some like smaller amount, right? Like, maybe you spend 10 million. And then that, you know, you look at, you project out and or maybe it's 12, you know, I mean, we made a calculation, budget team made a calculation, and then, but it was based on projections of economic, you know, and which if not. Probably the ongoing discipline needed to be really dialed in on this might not have all been there, you know, and in the fog of war, it's hard to figure this all out. So like, and there's, there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of organizations that, you know, woke up sober one day after the end of all this. Money started coming in and they're all saying, hold on.
Yeah, and I think that we would have to go back and reconstruct some of that. We're not necessarily prepared to to talk about
Yeah, that's fine.
That blip in the fund balance, although it it's there and you can see it. But we can definitely sit down and even consult with some former staff to get you the details of that. Commissioner Mihia.
Thank you. In terms of ARPA, it was separated. Yeah, the lost revenue was a piece that came into the general fund. That was, I mean, it was a pretty big amount. And then I I also want to add, right, like, there was also this sky-high like sales tax that came through that even in our projections, it wasn't expected during that time. And then, of course, it just dropped lower than, you know, any other revenue is projected. And so, you know, once we, once we, when we talk about that blip, like, there's a lot of things that that like play into that as well as a lot of, you know, with the high revenue came a lot of hits those years too that we don't really talk about either. You know, we were doing negotiations during that time. We had really high risk, health insurance, all of those part, like, they really skyrocketed. And so, you know, there was like a lot of things that where there was high revenue coming in, there was a lot of hits that we were taking too.
Right, Commissioner Mihia, that stimulus dollars is again what threw off economic forecasts. It was infused in, that's aside from ARPA CARES Act dollars, used in straight into the into the local economy. And things didn't dip the way they thought. So when the budget team is making projections to try and smooth that out, and sales tax comes in at all-time high without an understanding that could that be sustained or not, then it's hard to justify like projecting that we should start tightening things down. I do understand from our former assistant county manager that commissioners were under tremendous pressure that to do it year by year because the revenues were coming back higher than anticipated. But that was an isolated situation, didn't last very long. And then it came down. And then in 2324, you did go through a cut exercise. And there was conversations with departments and offices and things, decisions that were made. So there was adjustments that tried to be made. Inflation is higher than we anticipated. There's other costs that are hitting us that we don't have any control over, like public defense caseload standards, et cetera. And revenues are so flat. It's kind of the mixture of where we got to where we got to. We're not alone. We look at counties and cities all over the nation, from, you know, some of the largest counties like Los Angeles County to the third largest county in Texas in the nation, Harris County, that's a county in a Houston, I saw a headline that they're having to cut 220 million from their budget. So there's things that our folks are taking place. Our jurisdictions locally are having to go yet look at other cuts for this coming up year. So we're not alone in where we're at. And of course, as we heard the lieutenant governor talk about the situation of the state. It's a, but what I want to point out is the board took steps to create a strong fiscal foundation for the county. That is board direction to have a balanced budget, and that's what we're going to be working on for 2627.
Thank you. So this is a repeat from the last presentation, just showing you what the deficit trend looks like from this year 2023 through 25. Again, the current five-year projection, which is showing the expenditures on the red line are exceeding the revenues on the green line with key budget drivers being the collective bargaining agreements, internal service rate adjustments, the public defense caseload standards that the county manager just mentioned, and then other pending executive session decisions that will have impacts. We do have some assumptions and variances on expenditure growth, sales tax revenues, the cumulative revenue growth, and then budget reversion estimates. And then we have a deviation factor of roughly 2% that's built into this five-year projection.
Just want to speak to this real, real quick.
Oh, no, I was just gonna ask if we can slow down just a little bit because we just got this information this morning. So I'm just trying to follow through.
I will say that your budget team is like an advanced radar system. As they hear about things taking place in the organization, they take that information and they start to look at how does that impact our spending and do we have revenue to keep track with it? We know that some situations sometimes don't materialize. We see them off in the distance as a threat. By the time they come close, it may never happen. That's where our commitment is to be communicating to you on a very regular basis going forward. Whether it's hard times or good times, so that you know if there's an upside, we're ready to come up with a plan on how to spend that. Bad information or information we have to adjust to that we have time to do then. What this chart and the chart before shows, the chart before shows a great level overview of the mixed match of spending. We talked about that last time.
Yeah, but and but what, to me, what was interesting was to look at you look at 2022, 23, 3 million surplus, 3 million deficit, that biennium almost perfectly balanced. So it's only this, like, this biennium that's just like
Yep.
I mean, we were, there was no, there was no structural deficit or imbalanced budget in going before 2024.
That's why we thought this chart was so helpful to see, because I think the double axis chart that we've been using kind of
asks this a little bit.
Yeah, this is a better representation of, okay, now we understand what we have to adjust in those two different columns there.
This just showed to me, yeah, I mean, because I was like, God, this seemed like it happened, it's happened fast. And this kind of shows that, yeah, I'm not, I'm not imagining that. It's happened really fast.
And we're not alone. Look at the, you know, our wonderful partner, City of Olympia. They, in the past, past year and the incoming next year, they're looking at having to make some significant budget adjustments based on revenues underperforming. Next slide, I think, is the, what I would want you to think about is that's the advanced radar system. Things that, as our budget team hears about, and we start to identify them as a potential threat, we have to start figuring out how do we put those in with the normal growth factor that our county has been experiencing in some of the key areas. And when we look at, there's contracts that will have to be worked through with some of our unions. And there's other things that are unknown. That's where And there's other things that are unknown. That's where in the out years, it can get more speculative. But what's really important for this chart is to show the trending uh specifically for the revenue. Now, we would be the first to come back if revenue starts to perform better. If interest rates fall or if there's things that stimulate the economy, that create more sales tax, uh, more transactions on on property tax, that number starts going up. That's beneficial because then it shows that there's less that we have to address and worry about. The opportunity and the goal, long term, with the direction that the board set in its resolution, is we got to get that to balance. Are there any questions? Or are we ready to move on to the next slide? Just give, happy to give some time just so it can be absorption of the information.
I like this slide. Uh, adding in like the financial assumptions is definitely helpful to me, how like, understanding that, so.
Thank you. I think um one of the things that the county manager is hitting on being an advanced radar is when we look at the budget drivers and the assumptions that we are made aware of. Um, this is where there's a difference in fund balance projections, right? Between the auditor of financial services who's dealing with actuals based on budgets that are adopted and the budget team who's looking into the future and considering all of the threats and opportunities that are presenting themselves to you.
And then over the last year, there's things that have moved from the unknown column into the known column, like the the bargaining agreements. Earlier in the year when we were talking about that, you, there was a big column that was like, hey, these are, these are things that are out there that we don't know how are going to affect this, but we've.
And we still have several items in the hopper, right, waiting to to come through, so.
That, that's the enhanced work that our analysts are doing. Is talking with departments and ask and offices, asking them, what do you see coming down the road so that we can have an awareness? That's a partnership, then our goal is to take that and then in these types of briefings, bring that for you so that we, you can have the detailed information about what some of these things are and why we think they're gonna, they're going to hit the budget the way they are. Because then we can have discussions about how real is that? Do we keep it in the unknown? Um, until we get more information and figure out if it is going to be a pressing issue.
And then, and I guess a couple of questions on my end for this. So with the finance on the expenditure, I don't know, revenue um side of things, have we, when we are these assumptions around sales tax revenue variance, um, are they in line with the revenue forecast council? Like, are we looking at at what the state of Washington is saying for each county?
Every month religiously, yes, and um I have been indicating to the board for the better part of ten months that we were projecting about one point seven on average in sales tax collections and the state is reporting the same, okay, recently.
That's a good, great question, Commissioner Grant, because that is something that has um our former assistant county manager was handing over to uh Summer. We all made the decision that we would start using those state numbers as a guide, because you don't want to be way off. They have a whole team of experts working on that and they're dealing in multiplications of our number. So if they get it off, their, their hole becomes way bigger than ours. Uh, and so I really appreciate Summer's um dedication to working with those outside economic indicators.
Previous practice.
They were, I don't know. We were updating it, it was a calculation, um, but the assistant county manager had passed over some duties to the former budget um before the predecessor and some of those calculations hadn't been updated. So now what we're doing is making sure they're not just static calculations, that she's regularly touching base and then updating if we have to change the numbers internally.
Thank you.
Well, and you know, my comments on on this slide is, I mean, to me, I, I think, I mean, I really like that first, the first slide and the slide. I mean, because it really does kind of, it shows like yeah, how big the problem is and how much of a percentage jump it is and and the the issues. You know, I think that, I think that um, you know, probably five or six, right before COVID, right? Twenty twenty, so in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, when as a budget chief, you know, we were, the revenue force council is something we have to attend every month. And, you know, we're consistently looking at trends of how people are going to spend, when they're not going to spend, how are we going to make decisions? And I think what's really important, you know, that I'm finding that's really important in this, this graph is that what we know is that uh COLAs, you know, our overall expense for our county when it comes to who we have to pay and how we have to pay things would be that we have to stay in line with um the economic growth. And that um, you know, that our county is growing and growing and growing and growing. And it seems to me that um our county is growing to the point where, and we have to stay in line with cost of living wages, keeping people happy. Um, and that um we just um, we just don't have enough revenue. I mean, and and I, I think that that's, um, I think you guys have done a really good job of showing that. Um, you know, um, showing that, hey, this, something is going to have to change in order for us to keep up with basic maintenance level. This is not even adding any, I think, extra, right?
Six percent. I mean, I don't think anyone's ever boiled it down to a specific number like that.
And we're not unique.
But we didn't really know like what that gap was and it looks like it's five percent a year.
Well, it's six percent over this five-year period, but some of those years are very high, right? So, yeah, but six is the average across the five years.
You're right, that counties have, they have different and more limited tools available to them for revenue than cities do. Uh, and then in the way that counties work, um, some of the more developed and uh, a- and by design. But some of the more developed areas get taken over by by cities. And so that's part of the dynamic that's not unique to Thurston County. But I think Summer and the team did a great job of highlighting what's the potential trend and what we have to adjust.
Okay, so again, this is a repeat from the last one, would show you the general fund breakdown percentage by office and department. Um, keeping in mind that the, as of amendment two, the general fund um expenditure budget was adopted at a hundred and forty six million dollars. Um, we do have some assumptions built into the prior two slides that brings that up to just under a hundred and forty nine million. Um, and that's without any additions through the remainder of the amendment cycles this year. Okay, so I wanted to bring this slide back up again. Um, this was the proposed reduction by percentage. This slide shows you what the revenue and the expenditures were for twenty two through twenty four actuals. Um, as of the date this was put together, keeping in mind that fiscal year twenty twenty four has not been closed yet. Um, what the difference is in the revenues adopted and expenditures, um, I'm sorry, actuals. Um, and then in twenty five through twenty seven, those are estimates of revenues to be received, expenditures as they are currently built into the model without backing out um any of the expenditures to balance the budget. So in twenty twenty five, you can see that you are at seventeen percent overspend. Uh, in twenty six, without stripping anything out, you're at roughly twenty five percent and in twenty seven, thirty one percent. And those figures are derived by all of the assumptions listed in the prior slide, which would be growth factors um across salaries and benefits, placeholders for COLAs, known uh ratified contracts at this point for the next uh two years. Um, any other uh impacts by state or Supreme Court rulings such as the caseload standards? Um, any costs associated that the, the board has already committed to in the future that have not been captured in budget?
Also, if I can add something.
Yes, sir.
These numbers also include an anticipated of reversion or money back from unspent funds. I personally have not seen um jurisdictions bank on that a- as as a guarantee. Um, I've seen jurisdictions take any reversion and roll them over into a one-time bucket to be used for one-time. It would be, in a long-term approach, better for us not to count on a reversion. When you authorize a budget for departments, you really want them to spend their complete budget, you know? Um, because that's what, you're authorizing a level of service. So counting on a reversion and keeping it in the mix, it's a little bit of miss, it creates a little bit of a misleading understanding of how much dollars we really have to work with. Uh, it would be best to not count on a reversion and if one came, to roll that over into a bucket for only one-time expenses.
It's like, it should be incidental, not planned.
Yes, because we really want our departments to spend their revenue on the mission that the board approves for them to spend, which is on their staffing and on their programs, get out there and do good work in the community. Um, and so if we're, if we're seeing.
How do you control that? Sorry, Gino, how do you control, yeah, is that through the, like some type of position control policy? Is that through?
No, not necessarily through position control. I think the way we do that is the path we've started, it's to activate the analysts to have in time, real-time conversations throughout the year and every quarter to work with departments and offices who, if they're not tracking to spend for us to work to help them to figure out why they may not be able to spend their dollars or what they need to spend their dollars on, because sometimes in giving back those dollars, there's needs departments have that go unmet. But then they're going to come back and ask for dollars, so there's an opportunity to work that through. Now, if there's, if there's constant vacancies because they can't fill positions, then we, we work with HR. It's just a different activation of the organization. What happens is the analyst with the office uh electeds and the department heads, they really start having a, a much deeper conversation with Summer who's then bringing that back and then we would do quarterly updates to show, here's where we're at, here's our spent. Then we can um start having some conversations about how do we figure out what adjustments may need, may need to be made. Because we don't want departments keeping positions vacant uh year after year. If they don't need the positions, then we'd want to, then we'd want to give those positions back. But if the positions can't be filled, then we would want to solve that through of the tools HR has available for them. Maybe the recruitments aren't successful, maybe the position needs to be retooled, readvertised. Um, there's a lot of different variables, but we would want to have those discussions quarterly with the board so that we can anticipate operationally, how are we doing meeting our mission by, one of the indicators would be dollar spent.
If I can just add one clarifying point to that, um, yes, it is to bring the information back quarterly, but the budget team is committed to meeting with the program leads monthly, if not more frequently. Um, unless there is a calendar conflict and they cannot do that. So I'm receiving monthly reports via email on everything that they um are meeting about, the topics covered, any um items that are coming up and then uh occasionally I pop in on those as well and sit in and listen and ask my own questions. So um, again, I just have to say, great job to my team, right? Because these are our new practices that are, are in the works and they are always taking them and just rolling with them in stride and with a smile, so.
We'll say that, oh, yeah, please, question.
I mean, no, you go ahead.
Just will say that we know it's a lot of work right now. I want to acknowledge that. Um, it's kind of like spring training, we're conditioning in new ways um to get a different response from, from the team. But I really appreciate all of you.
It's spring training and they, they're putting on a baseball cap and taking it off and then they have on a football helmet.
Well, you know, and I'll acknowledge, you know, it's really difficult. Um, I think you guys are doing a really good job trying to, you know, figure out how to best present this information in a way that tells a story and gives meets five very different people who are up here, um, you know, um, for us to be able to understand the information. I really still struggle with these two slides and and um, uh, and I'm just, we flip back to the last one and I guess.
Sure.
I'm so, we're so close, like for me to be able to have something that I find useful for making decisions. And um, you know, on this slide, so I'm just gonna show the examples, like when we look at this slide, this is just the general fund, right? This is just the general fund, so it's really weird, like, so if someone on the outside is looking at this, they would go, holy crap, look at the sheriff. So like, the law and corrections is, you know, uh, and I'm only looking at, I'm not looking at the pie chart. I'm only looking at these numbers in a row, which are really great. This is the great, this is my favorite one so far, because it's very, very clear. And it shows very clearly that our general fund is completely consumed by our sheriff's office. But when you go down to public health and you go, now, I'm just going to preface this, that a, a budget is more or less a document that shows the priorities of, of an office, right? And so it says that we are spending twenty four thousand dollars and five, five hundred and twenty one thousand, I know that's not real. But um, you know, that public health and social services, holy crap, you know, you're like, oh, well, you know.
The exact same thing as a candidate in twenty eighteen, exact.
You didn't understand, right?
Just a odd picture. Thurston County doesn't care about health, it was one percent back then.
Right, exactly. And but what we're not seeing is the other columns that should be aligned. So I just wish we had a chart that, where we saw it next time, where it shows the other columns.
We can show non-general fund dollars.
No, well, not general fund, right? So because I, because at the end, it would be public health, like over here on the right, it would see, we would see that public health has, you know, um, money come from SAMSA, money coming from the federal government.
Public Works isn't on here. It looks like we don't do any public works.
Right, and so, so I guess that, that for me, because, and the reason that I say that that's something for me that makes a really big difference is because when we flip to the next page, um, then I'm able, I'm able to flip back and forth and go, okay, well, public health funds most of its positions, right? Ninety percent, I'd say ninety eight percent of its positions through other fund sources, right? So they're getting money because they're drawing down grants, they're bringing money in from all of these different places. And so when we say to them that they have the same reduction or something like that, you know, it, it would help me to be able to see like, oh, well, um, you know, that if they pulled down more money in this, then maybe we, we don't have to reduce them in this. Does that make sense?
That's make sense and I think it's hard though, because like.
So you bring up a great point and I think for the public and staff watching, we, we may be telling too narrow of a, of a, of a, well, we've narrowed in too close to the picture. There's a lot more county budget out there.
Right.
And the reason we're focusing on general fund is because that's the revenue issue we're having. But we will definitely
Right, yeah.
Bring back and add a slide that is before this slide that shows all funding sources.
For me to make a decision on, so like, I, I just, I guess the, what I'm trying to say is that those other fund sources matter when we're making decisions around general fund adjustments.
Yes.
Right?
And, and what we'll find later in the presentation, we are in no way going to recommend a, a cross-the-board.
Right.
Of the departments that don't, those that sort of need the, the.
Right.
Public Health is a great example. They have already laid off staff because some of their funding sources have been hit by federal and state um changes.
Right.
So they're already in that line, but do they have as much to worry about on the general fund side? Girl, because their contribution to the, of general fund is much different than other departments.
Right.
But I think, I hear what you're saying about the context. We can provide the other columns that show what are the funding sources or non-general fund sources and then we can drill down from there.
Yeah.
Sorry, Commissioner Ford.
Trying to say, like, it's also like, get, I, I, I want to, you know, give latitude to staff, like, because like, when they live in this conversation every day and then we jump in, jump out, we live in it, but not like Summer does, like Summer swims in this daily. We jump in, we jump out, we jump back in next week, we have to, we have to remember that this is an ongoing conversation. And like, I, when, when Summer presents us a slide and an assumption and information, I, like, I picture in her head, she's checking a box, saying, hey, I told Wayne that, now I'm going to move on to the next thing. When you're in, when you jump into the meeting, sometimes you forget those and then sometimes like, it's not easy to remember that, like, we forget those and, and then we ask you to zoom in, zoom out, zoom in, zoom out, like, it's, it, it, it takes a lot of like, discipline to just keep moving forward and right now we're zoomed in and we're getting to the, to a point, well, I think we're way past the point where we've been presented a lot of information and we need to start making decisions. And, you know, like, I, I know that, you know, we might walk out of the room and get emails from other places and people saying that these things are wrong. You know, or s- saying that assumptions are off, we've got to bring that in. You know, or s- saying that assumptions are off. We've got to bring that in here. We've got to make sure if we're gonna not. Buy into what we're being told that we're saying why, why not, asking for different information. And then we're all forming this collective, uh, you know. Way forward so that we can, I mean, there's gonna be some difficult decisions that need to be made that I think we're. Probably a year past making.
You know, and, and I, I mean, I will just say this, that I think you guys kind of just threw the short straw as a. I mean, I was a, you know, I understand your role, so, um, but because you have a commissioner who was a budget chief and. Who, huh, you know, is just like, needs to understand, but we're so close, like I'm ready, I, I'm with Wayne where it's like. We know, we all know at this point, we've got to start making decisions. I'm just one inch away from being able to help make those decisions with that full picture.
We'll help get you there, Commissioner.
Right. And so that, that's where I'm at. I'm like, this is each time I see this, it's getting better and better and better and. Um, and it's just that one little last piece for me where I'm like, I need to see all fund sources and a full. Assessor's office with a line item that goes across that shows all the other things. Then I'm able to make better decisions about what I'm gonna do in this column.
Sounds good.
Okay, yeah.
And I think that, um. You're the commissioner since January this year.
Right.
So, um, thanks for verbalizing what you need and what can.
You're reminding me of just thought processes I had. And like with public health, I understand you like, you'd be like, well, how can I cover public health if we're spending so little on it? But you have to, like, see, like, well, we're not actually spending that little.
Right.
So you can't really sort of prioritize high unless you know the.
Yep, but that's, okay, let's keep going, Summer.
Okay, so any questions on this one? Can I move forward? Okay, so this is a zoomed in view of, uh, twenty five through twenty seven testaments. Um, revenues, expenditures. And the differences, um, the primary difference between this slide and the one prior is that in twenty twenty seven, the expenditures are significantly lower. And the reason for that is because I'm taking into consideration that the board. Has adopted a thirty six million dollar cut to expenditures to balance the budget. And we're still, um, overspending in twenty twenty seven because of the assumptions that have yet to be added to that particular year. So if you look at the prior slide, twenty twenty seven, we're estimating a hundred and seventy seven million as being the spend. This new slide is showing a hundred and forty one million. That's with a thirty six million dollar deduction. And the twelve million dollars that's remaining that creates an imbalanced budget here is because of the contract increases year three. Estimated indirect service rates for twenty twenty seven. Uh, the second year of the public defense caseload standard costs, um, the executive session pending decisions. And then the growth factors that we've discussed previously. We, um, require at least a twenty five percent projected reduction for twenty twenty six to balance the budget. The general fund budget.
Just a general portion, yes.
Mm-hmm.
That's the issue we're having today.
That is correct.
I think I'm following. So, um, so we were saying that this is your slide to show that in twenty seven, twenty twenty seven, if we. Make those decisions to reduce things, that this is what our deficit would be.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a handout that typical set put out to you, but I was too busy to put on the screen. Yes, I do. Thank you. So what this will show you. Is, um, the twenty twenty five adopted budget through amendment two. The office or departments percent of budget, that's on the left side in black. Twenty twenty six is included in red. It will show you the estimated base budget with all of the known growth factors. And all of the assumptions, um, for increases. The percentage of general fund with that estimated twenty six base budget. And there's a column in the middle that is not included in the reduction exercise. Twenty six point four million for the sheriff's department law, which we call control. And the reason for that not being included in the reduction is because when the public safety sales tax measure was put before the voters and passed. It was, uh, captured in resolution language and in that, that voter measure that there would be a maintenance of effort, um. Level maintained and that's twenty six point four million.
That's the discussion we had last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the sheriff and the auditor and to, to provide definition about that. That's the number that was decided upon.
Um, we've excluded public defense at this point, um, because it doesn't make sense to, um. Reduce their budget when we know that they are required to implement, um, a new caseload standard.
Yeah, there's no sense in even having them do an exercise or we're gonna be adding to them by, by requirement. It's starting as early as, uh, this January. Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, but wouldn't that? So, so when the public def, gosh, this is, I gotta think about what I'm trying to say here. So when the, so when and if we get some other funding for the public defense, um, you know, let's say, you know, the state comes through and says, here. Have some money and.
Swap it.
Right, then, okay, then you'd swap it.
Yes.
See where it get, how I get confused here is that, is for me, it's. When that kind of money comes in, it'd be like, I don't know, I mean, proviso dollars, I don't, it might, does that make sense when I say that out loud?
Yeah.
Okay, that it would be like, this money is specific to public defense, but it doesn't get. Dumped into the general fund.
It wouldn't get dumped in. We would, um, yeah, I hear what you're saying. Well, let's use, for example, HB twenty fifteen.
Yes.
Let's, if it brings in projected seven point.
Seven point five.
Seven point five. And if, saying the board would do this, but if the board were to say, we're gonna use. Some of that money for public defense, then it helps to offset. The growth that they have to do, but you're right, it comes in as a separate funding source. So all of a sudden. Public defense becomes a little bit like public health where they have additional funding sources.
Right.
We could expand that out.
Yeah.
What, what we did for this exercise is to show, cause in these departments, this isn't all of their funding. This is just the general fund contribution. And what we're showing is based on the general fund contribution, what, what constitutes the whole general fund. What do we have to adjust to get to those twenty six balance and twenty seven balance? And that's, that's this exercise here. It kind of breaks it out based on the percentages of what they receive from the general fund. We did a straight percentage breakout, what they would have to cut, so the cut would be equally distributed across. The two immovable components are the, uh, maintenance of, of effort level. For the sheriff. And knowing that public defense has to actually grow, it makes zero, since, since we don't have any new revenue right now. Makes, there, there's no way for us to back anything out.
One, one thing, I'm, I'm getting a little ahead maybe, but one number, and I could do the math like individually, but it would be useful to have. Like, I couldn't actually do the math. So it would be useful to know. With this last chunk. Then what percentage of that department's budget is reduced, like considering other sources, right?
We can get you that information.
So then you like, so then your assessor goes from sixty one and forty five, that's it for them. But for other departments, like that's a smaller, you know, the, the similar magnitude might be a smaller percent of their overall budget. So we would actually see the net effect.
Yes.
Of these as to what we're doing to each department.
I think you just kind of melded it.
Right, we just mind melded.
Yeah.
You're seeing, you're understanding where I'm coming with this, like, it could be that we get, so for example, let's just say, oh, the, let's, I, I love when I play pretend. Because we can say that the public defense, the state just says, hey, we made this new law, we're gonna give you guys. Twenty two million dollars next year. Let's just pretend that they do that and they, and they double the public defense budget. That means we could actually reduce the general fund. We could reduce the public defense general fund overall amount because they just received such a big amount from a provisoed amount of money. That, so it doesn't affect, I mean, we could gain money in the, in the general fund. So that's, so I think about that all the time with the sheriff's department or with twenty fifteen.
Yep.
And I'm thinking about like, okay, if we are able to draw down another twenty million dollars and this, then we could potentially reduce. One of these line items based on whatever proviso dollars we get. And that's why I'm very interested in seeing the other pieces of the budget all the time. Next to the general fund. Okay.
We should hear.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. I just got, um, deja vu from our conversation a couple of years ago. Um, and as, um. Summer, one of my questions is, and these projections, are we including the grant funding that some of these departments are getting?
This is the, yes, they're the total budgets, general fund budgets for these offices and departments.
Because Commissioner Mansour, like, you know, I'm, I'm guessing, I'm. Asking you because this was the conversation we had, uh, when it came to some departments and, you know, it's. I believe it was emergency services, right? And, and, um, there were, public defense was another one. Where as we were looking at their budgets, a lot of, uh, that, there was, uh, grants that were, that was added into that. Piece of the cuts. And, um, we went through this whole exercise and we removed the whole grant piece of, of that. Do you remember that?
I do remember that.
So as I'm looking at these figures, I'm like, is that included in there? Because it was, I mean, this was a whole conversation of like. Well, grants isn't, you know, um, it's revenue coming in for specific purposes. And so. As I'm looking at these figures, I, I just, you know, wanna be cognizant that.
Yeah, we can pull that out.
Yeah, if those figures are included in, then it's, it doesn't really give us up.
We're, we're, we're picking up what you're laying down. Um, what we need to see is. How the general fund dollars come together, make sure that some, some of the, we will say. Some departments do include the grants in there because that's the fu, that's the funding source. It, it's not a recommendation that we do that. In the future per se, so there's some changes that we can make in this process. And we know that other departments have other sources, Summer.
Well, if, if there are revenue backed general fund grants, the revenue is captured in the revenue figures. It's part of your adopted budget, as are the expenditures. So even if we strip the grant funding out and the associated spending with that funding. Your deficit is still the same.
Right.
So, yeah.
I mean.
There was something about though, that like, if it's like. Cutting it would like, cutting the, the general fund piece would like, then we wouldn't. It'd be like you're losing money, like you're losing ground. It'd be like.
Yeah.
It, 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 it's a subset of the thing about like having other funds. It's almost like an other fund within the general fund. And I remember emergency services was, was a particular one, cause like, they had like eleven positions and eight of them had partial grant funding. So by cutting like the positions. Like we were actually only saving this tiny stratum and we were losing all this grant funding that was coming in.
Right.
Without any savings, really.
And, and we're, I, I think we are probably like two steps ahead. In that we haven't engaged with departments about what that looks like. For the sake of this conversation, where we're at is showing the board, here's how the deficit. Equals or impacts departments based on the percentage of general fund they've received. Um, we're not saying that that is the be all, end all approach, but it is a great start. For us to start the conversation with departments about when they receive these targets. What's now the impact? And this is the, to me, the most important part of this whole conversation. What's the impact of programs and services? That's where we will start to, to look in a lot more detail. About what dollars are simple, just straight general fund and what dollars are matches that then. Create a lot more opportunity. And so you don't necessarily want to trigger that because it triggers a bigger landslide of, of issues for. But hearing that what the deja vu part is really good for us to hear.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to step into, um, a situation. We, we want to get that information to you upfront and quickly so that you're having. The, 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 the context and I think between Commissioner Mansour and Commissioner Grant. Your perspectives are, are well put, so we can get you the additional information you're looking for.
I know there were situations where the grant, like the general fund was funding like ten percent of a position.
Sure.
That's very normal.
And you take away the general fund position, the chunk, and you lose ninety percent of an FTE. Like with, for no value to the general fund cut exercise. Those were the situations we kept getting hit with and it was like.
And just for the sake of clarity, so Caroline, when I said the word, I don't know how, I mean, I think at some point, one of the biggest things that we all have to. Learn the same language. And so like, when I say proviso, it equals grant. So, uh, so any, so it's like non-medicaid and Medicaid, right? So Medicaid funding is one flavor of money and non-medicate funding is everything else. And so general fund is Medicaid. And everything else, grants, um, provisos coming from the state, federal dollars, all is like this other thing. And that you have to have some of this over here and match over here.
Yeah.
But we, what we as a board need to know, what are those other non-medicate funds that actually make up the full budget?
Right.
Do you know what I mean? And that, I think that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, yeah. And it's a great an analogy because in those no, other non-general fund buckets. There's a, the board has. A lot less discretion. So if we're notified by the, the, a, a funder on the federal level or the state level that the dollars are done. Then we, we react. We inform you, but we, we react because you don't have the ability to say. Well, I don't want to cut those dollars because we're not making, ones making the decision.
We can't take general fund dollars to supplement that thing that just poof, doesn't exist anymore.
If we had, if we had more general fund, you could, but with the reality that there's a deficit here, we can't, right?
Right. Right. And so that's like when I think about a big chart where I'm like, oh, so if you take away something over here, then you have to add over here. And over for the budget to balance, right?
We also can't assume that the state is ever going to like magically come in and save us with some. Proviso for public defense or the court might put. Yeah.
Right.
We need to right this ship within our own means.
I like the pretendo.
I go, you know, you never know.
All right, next slide.
Commissioner Edwards, I'm sure is buying his lottery ticket like he promised he would.
Yeah, he's been saying that for, um. Five years and I probably longer with you. Every time I see him.
Hundred million, the tower ball, yeah, one person is powerball and we'd be good for it maybe two years.
So this exercise, again, this sheet shows our community. What we're gonna begin to communicate with the general fund departments as an exercise. It is not direction, it's an exercise to then bring back what the impacts are. We will bring back the additional information that commissioners have asked for to give you more context on the non-general fund spending. And in that environment, then we can start looking at from an impact standpoint. Where is there flexibility and where do we need to have conversations about how do you, how do we look at some of these, uh, cuts and their impact?
So then if we were giving this to them, then they're more or less saying, start looking at vacancy savings and start looking at every area of your budget so that.
Yeah, they are, the, the offices and departments are the experts of their operations. So we don't want to come in and tell them what to cut. We want to say, hey, these are some targets for the exercise sake. Need to go through this. Now I'd be remiss not to talk about timing. Timeframe we have is, we need to start rounding what the new numbers are and have something ready to process.
No later than September twelfth.
So we gotta get this exercise to them probably by the end of the day. And then start working that through. I will, I would not send this out to them without first bringing everyone together, our leadership. And talking through some of these dynamics, giving them a special session. But then effectively starting to, tomorrow, we would be working for them to work with our analysts on, let's talk about the impacts of this percentage cut. The exercise then is meant to come back to the board quickly in about a week and a half's time. To then look at and the operational impacts with input from some of our offices and departments. Who are gonna take a significant, uh, cut here. That's part of the lead up to then an ultimate decision on where are we going to finalize the twenty six, twenty seven number. So that we can balance that budget. From now until December, it is a fast slip and slide of dates and. Timelines that have to be met in order for us to bring the Viennian budget for twenty six, twenty seven to you. By our statutory requirement of December date.
Yes.
So what I would encourage you to, as you look at this, please let uh me, Summer. Know if you want special sessions, one-on-one sessions with the budget team to chew through and to ask about this. We'll be responsive to get the context to you. This, the sheet is really important because what the team has worked hard to do is take. Starting in the fall of twenty-five, that we think things are not where they need to be because of the projections. Coming into twenty-six in January, the signaling we've done with these work sessions. That this is, this is a real situation. And now this next installment of, here's what the situation means to. Our general fund impacted departments and offices. And you're right, Commissioner Mensah, it is not in. Some departments who rely more on the general fund than others have a have a bigger impact, even though the percentage may be smaller than a bigger department. Because they may have less um additional revenue sources flowing to them.
And I think that's relevant too.
It is.
Because it, I mean, when you think of fairness, it's. It's quite random to how, you know, who just has a bigger general fund budget, right? Like.
It is.
It's not, there's not any strategic logic to that. It's just the way bills were passed and.
Yes.
Funding sources were allocated. So it, as we make like, you know, as we see that overall picture, it can. It could inform adjustments.
Yes.
By the board. To to make a kind of a smooth, a smoother overall fairness to what we're trying to accomplish.
And what I've seen, organizations that have to cut, it's 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 challenging, it's painful, it can be devastating to. Especially government organizations. If you go through the cut, but then immediately begin to look at the structure of the budget. What, when money comes back, because money will come back. What do we need to grow? How do we need to grow? And begin to set some of that framework in place. And and I would encourage do so by some of the, by setting policies in place. Because some of the the items that have held this county in such good stead is the leadership former boards have taken, like in twenty-twenty. To establish that resolution. Without those documents, it's hard then, it's like every board has to try to figure out what what is it going to do? When from a policy standpoint, a balanced budget makes good sense, that's a great policy to have in place. The specifics are still up to you on how to do that. It's always the board's discretion on that level of decision-making. Our job is going to be to quickly work on the background with our offices and departments to get, what does this exercise mean? That we can quantify that in real service and program impact.
This exercise. Um, I don't, I did that.
I don't know either.
But this, this exercise, right? So uh going through, you know, a cut exercise or a cost control exercise. I, you know, and and, you know, I hearing, you know, Commissioner Mensah saying, well, you know, like. You know, things evolve, right? Like as bills come in, things happen, things end up in this bucket, that bucket. And an organization kind of like ends up like with its own brain and its own culture and things evolve in such a way. I do not want to send anyone on a wild goose chase, but I, there was an article that came out. With, from in the Olympian saying that the city of Olympia employed an AI tech company to come in and, and you and I talked about this. And you take in all the information, evaluate the budget, and it's almost like. I I don't know what they got, but I'm really curious. And I would, I would ask that maybe you have a conversation with Jay to find out what that is. Maybe. It got them nothing. Maybe it got them a complete outside perspective that looked at all these inputs and outputs and. From a different, you know, place in the universe is able to say, hey, the things you're doing are not in alignment with. Whatever, like i- i- if it's a chance.
Sure.
To get valuable, you know, truly third, whatever, you know. Third-party objective information that says, hey, you know, like, you're doing this with this money in this bucket over here, but it doesn't align with it, you know, like. I I'm curious if that, their exercise got them valuable information that can help like. Get them out of a rut that they're in. Or may, I mean, maybe it's nothing. I don't know.
Well, it's it's definitely worth taking a look. In fact, I have a meeting with Jay this week. Um, the city manager of Olympia have the conversation. And I think if um it was productive for them. And we talk about this, it would be good for commissioners to communicate that to our offices, our elected offices. Because um counties differ the cities in that there are, they don't have elected offices within, within the city, with the, with the exception of the court.
Yes.
Away from that. Whereas we have half of our operations, a large impact to the general fund, you'll see, our elected offices. So if it y- yielded some good results, we can bring that back. And I think a discussion with the elected office. Um, officials would be good to talk about, that's something the board wants to explore. Yeah.
But, well, I mean, just to add on to that, like when Commissioner Grant was talking about the sheriff's piece of the general fund.
Right.
As you were talking, I was thinking, you know, gosh, it'd be nice to know like across different jurisdictions, if that's an, you know, unusually high piece. And that's maybe the kind of thing that that type of analysis could do. Like, do the legwork, like, for, for any of our staff to do legwork would take forever, but maybe through AI tools, you could more easily see. Hey, how much, you know, um, in counties.
The budgets.
Law enforcement take up, you know, X number percent, or is that high? As an example. Put like value judgments on like, hey, this program that you've got is, you know, high expense, low return. Uh, and that might not be something, you know, when you go to an individual department and you ask them to, you know. Go through this exercise, they they've got values in 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 their work that may not. You know, may not always. Like add up to like greater values, like, right? If I'm, if I'm down in the dirt and I'm working on this thing, I think what I'm doing is the most important thing in the world. And then if you find something that can zoom out and be like, hey, look, you know, this global picture paints what you're doing a little differently and. That's not coming from Commissioner Mensah, but it's coming from, you know, th- this tool that's able to evaluate it to give us. Some time of, some type of objective opinion that might, I don't know, I don't know what they got. I'm just, I'm curious.
Happy to have the conversation.
Okay, let's keep going.
All right. Uh, I think we're off this sheet now, unless there's anything you wanna add to it. The next slide.
Okay. So uh, the super fund balance outlook and the strategic approach um in the previous presentations to the board. We've outlined projected fund balance scenarios that highlight the urgent need for a dual strategy, which is reducing your expenditures and identifying new revenue sources. Um, the projected budget requirements by year in twenty-twenty-five, we do need to maintain at minimum three percent reversion. Um, and in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, we need to reduce total of approximately twenty-five percent. Um, in twenty-twenty-seven, uh, we will continue to monitor uh if the anticipated reduction of nine percent or thirteen million. Is required. Okay, so that includes the portion of the reduction exercise. Um, there was some. Feedback in the last presentation, I believe the last couple about um lid lift comparisons and what's better, what's, you know. What's the best strategy for the boards? I tried to put together some slides to, to give this information to you and maybe a little more um. Digestible, small chunks. So if you look at a single-year temporary lid lift, the pros here is that it's a quick fix. Um, oftentimes are considered easier to pass. Uh, the cons are they're not sustainable and it's best for one-time needs. Uh, one thing.
Can you explain, um, cause I know Commissioner had questions about what does single year and really the temporary versus the permanent? That's where I think we got hung up on last year as far as an understanding.
Sure, sure. So a single year um typically means a one-year levy lid lift. Uh, multi-year um means multiple years. Typically, you would rely on about six years, but you can do four years, I believe, up to seven years by statute. A temporary lid lift would reset your highest lawful levy amount um and the rate of collection to the amount that the board. Deems most appropriate to suit your needs, your funding needs. Um, in a single-year temporary lid lift, if we were to. Ask the voters for and be granted a dollar eighty max rate of collection per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. That would be your um levy amount for that one year. And after that year passes, we would revert back to our current rate of collection as if the lid lift never occurred. So what that means is there's essentially two records being kept through the assessor's office, through Department of Revenue. Um, and once that temporary lid lift expires, we go back to what the rate of collection would be. In the year we're in, as if the prior year was maintaining that same reduced rate of collection. A permanent, yeah.
That, when she explained that, helped me understand why the word temporary is used. Are there any questions about that?
A permanent lid lift um resets your highest lawful levy amount and your rate of collection to the amount. Just, you know, chosen by the board and approved by the voters. So if it was a dollar eighty, again, that would be your max rate of collection in year one. We would estimate that what that would be and every subsequent year would be variable depending on what the assessed valuations of the properties are. Within the county. Um, and then that would determine year over year, right? Through the calculations of what our rate of collection is and the equivalent dollar amount. Those do not expire. So at the end of your permanent um lid lift, whether it's a single year or multi-year. You continue on as that is the new starting point. You don't revert back to your prior rate of collection. The difference between a single-year permanent um and a multi-year permanent is that single-year permanent is really just a. It's a little bit of a boost, limited impact for uh what we would call a modest deficit. We have a large deficit and so the pros to a multi-year permanent lid lift is that it would create a sustainable structural fix. For the budget issues. It can be harder politically to pass. Um, but again, it's best for a large deficit. When you look at temporary measures, you really need to look at them as like one-time funding.
Yeah, so setting aside temporary, but between single-year and multi-year permanent, what I'm not understanding is why you said. If you're choosing the rate for the single-year bump, why is that? Why, I mean, you could make it smaller, you could make it big. I mean, why is it only, why are you saying it's only good for a small or modest deficit? I mean, you would be choosing how much to go up. And and then, and then my question is, what is the mo- multi-year, how is that work? Like, do you have to set in in advance, like what the step up would be or?
No.
I don't understand the multi-year permanent.
You still only select the first year.
Yes.
Rate of collection and the equivalent estimated dollar amount of collection. Every year after that is based off the calculation, so.
You have to do maintenance votes, is it?
No.
Based on calculation.
There's a calculation through the Department of Revenue that looks at the assessed valuations of the properties. Um, during that, that timeframe times, you know, there there's a calculation of assessed valuation times, say. Uh, the rate of collection uh equals a a very large number divided by a thousand gives you.
You've seen the sheet before, it's the the sheet like this, and we talk about the assessed value, the new construction value.
Yeah.
That's the sheet that.
That happens every year.
Right, but that's the, the starting point for that.
The starting point, y- y- we don't, we would not estimate anything beyond the first year of a multi-year permanent lid lift. We do the first year's estimations in any of these scenarios.
Uh, but I think what you're asking is like, what what's, what's the difference if?
Second year, what's different between multi-year permanent and single-year permanent?
So I think what, what we're not explaining is um on a single-year permanent, you set that rate. But at the end, there is a a downstep. Can you explain that a little bit?
Well, the rate that you establish is still the rate moving forward. However, generally, as a rule of thumb, right? Is if you look at assessed valuations in your jurisdiction in the county. Then the rate of collection typically, if the assessed valuation goes up, your rate of collection typically goes down. And that's because of the one percent limit factor. So in the single year, you're going to have a permanent lid lift. That resets your rate of collection. Let's just say it's a dollar eighty. If the assessed valuations continue to grow. And because of the one percent limitation, we're gonna collect less than the dollar eighty. And it's gonna continuously diminish over time. As valuations go up. If valuations go down, the likelihood of your collection going up is there. The multi-year is is different in the sense that you're establishing the first year, but there is an ongoing rate of collection that's increased. So I think here's the piece. Thank you for opening this avenue for me, spiring in my brain. The single year gives you a new rate of collection and you're limited to one percent after that at a permanent rate with that new rate. Multi-year, you can choose a different rate of collection. Typically, the exercises will show you six percent. So if you wanna set a new lid lift, say of a dollar eighty per thousand dollars of collection in the first year, the voters adopt that. And you also want a six percent max limitation, then each year of that. Each subsequent year of the multi-year permanent lid lift will allow you to exceed that one percent rate of collection.
Okay, I got you. Up to like six years, is that what it been that?
Up to six, as potentially seven, right? But typically, we're going with six. And the reason why I keep landing on six is because that's what my past history has been.
I I I get it. So I mean, okay, I I understand. I just see, it just seems to me like it's simpler, like. If you just set the single rate high enough, it's simpler.
But you're still limited to the one percent.
Yeah, but I mean, it's gonna drop, but I mean, we're so low, we're at the bottom right now. Like, I mean, you could just go, we have so much capacity there.
Right.
Like, if you were just kind of squeezed toward the top, then you might be looking at, that's where the multi-year permanent might be an attractive option. But we're s- uh, this is just how I'm seeing it, and tell me if I've got it wrong, but we're so low that it seems like we could accomplish anything we want to accomplish with a single-year permanent.
Yeah, I think the um, the dynamic is like with a multi-year permanent, if you don't calculate it right. You could actually start making less money because of how things work through. And that's where I think our EMS levy is.
Um, right, right.
So, so the assessor has offered to help and come and kind of lay out some scenarios, which I think would be extremely valuable. As the next kind of part of the education process, but you're right, Commissioner, that there is capacity. And a single-year adjustment and then letting that ride on the one, you know, the one percent to kind of reset it. Is definitely a strategy and an option. Our desire with this slide was to to clarify the infusion that was created by the single-year temporary, single-year permanent and.
No, I I I think it's clear to me now, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
There are jurisdictions that have gone a single-year permanent route, you know, it's like um. The litmus test for what the appetite is for the voters, what it looks like, you know, maybe to. So they're all viable options, whatever you choose.
This is simpler to explain because like, you know, I mean, it's hard for people to understand the way it's, the rate slips down, but once you understand that, then it's like you can, you know. A lot of times fire, I always see fire districts saying, we're just restoring what what you approved.
What it is.
You know, and so like, that's an easier thing to, to. It's the main, to our main force.
It is. So I mean, that that that, that's a great thing that you said, right? By statute, at some point, it was approved, right, that the max rate of collection is a dollar eighty. We're not even. Halfway there, honestly. If you strip out the road levy shift and you strip out the, the earmarks for veterans and mental health. Um, I think the rate of collection at the last presentation was like seventy-four, seventy-five cents. So. You know, you are asking the voters to restore what has already been approved. That and from my knowledge and the research I've done, I don't believe the county has ever asked the voters to restore. The property tax levy amount.
That, that's, that's the problem. It's a political thing where you've got multiple different groups sitting there with their bucket out. And if they were asking already and you weren't in line five years ago, now is maybe not the time to be standing in line asking for that restoration. It's, you know, did you, did you miss the vote? That's, that's the hard, you know, political calculation.
And and while we internally will see it as a restoration, of course, the public will see it as.
Yes.
As an ingredient. Yeah. So we we know that this is not taken lightly and that this is not something that is. Will be quickly accomplished. This is gonna have to be planned out and thought through. We're responding to the board's direction to look at these two funding options. One was a levy lid lift and one was HB.
And it's hard for me to have a discussion of, you know, we're, you know, we need more money. While we're also having a discussion saying we spend too much money. You know, it's like, and I understand you can fix both things, but it doesn't feel like it's, it's. You know, like, I don't know how much capacity is out there to absorb that narrative or that information or how well. You know, you can actually have that conversation with the community. Oh, no, 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 that's not what we're doing. That's not, you know, like.
Yeah.
I- i- as, as as right as that may be. You know, you can still end up, you know. In a bad place, doing the right thing. It. In a bad place, doing the right thing. It, not saying it's the right thing. I, I, I have reservations.
Yeah, I think where we're at with the size of the percentile, the end of twenty-six percent, that's significant for any operation. We were looking at a five percent reduction, even maybe ten percent reduction. Through this process, we will have to initiate, since we don't have a levy lid lift approved today.
Yeah.
We will have to initiate the twenty-six budget with, with.
Cause even in the most tax-heavy scenario there. There's no revenue produced from this for quite some time.
There's a lag period, yes.
Yes. The permanent measures would not go into effect until January of twenty-seven, and I believe that is also the case for the single.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And since we don't have.
Yes, it is.
You know, we're not sitting like on a fifty million dollar reserve or we can just say, hey, we're going to float, we're going to use that, take twenty million out. Yeah, we are at a place where. The exercise for cuts will turn into a reality.
This, there's no scenario where this slide puts money back into our budget.
Today.
Today.
Yeah.
To prevent any of the difficult cost-cutting measures that need to take place.
Right.
Okay, this is, um, estimates, um, for levy rates. Tax collection based on a five hundred thousand dollar home. Our current scenario is eighty-two cents per thousand with the road levy shift and the earmarks. Estimated annual tax on a five hundred thousand dollar home is four hundred and ten dollars, um, increase zero. So scenario A would be year one, um. And I'm sorry, the year is wrong there, but if we were to do a levy at a dollar twenty-seven based on our current assessed valuations. We're looking at six hundred and thirty-five dollars annual tax increase of two twenty-five, the net impact would be about thirty million dollars. And that, we've shown thirty-one to thirty-three million dollars, um, in prior presentations. The other scenario here is at a dollar eighty, um, annual tax is about nine hundred, um. About sixty-seven million dollars in increased collection. The assessor, um, has been asked and is ready to present at the Board of Future Date of Needby. So we went over this, so just quickly, what is considered better for a large budget deficit? It would be a multi-year permanent lid lift because it creates sustainable revenue, long-term planning opportunities, and it avoids what they call the fiscal cliff. Right, which is what you experience with the temporary lid lift of increasing your rate of collection and the actual dollars collected. And then reverting back to a lower amount. There was some discussion previously about lid lift and election dates. So again, you have the single year lid lifts that are available to you of special primary or general election. Multi-year lid lifts are only available at primary or general elections. Um, and that election dates determine the taxing. The lid lifts must be submitted no more than twelve months before the levy is made. They're levied in November. Do, um, April thirtieth the following year, which is the first date of collection in a year for property tax. And we do need to plan ahead, right? It's a year away, but we would need to plan early if it's something you want to do.
We also have to be mindful of the EMS levies.
Mm-hmm.
Just from a timeframe standpoint, which we reported on last.
Thank you. So the calendar dates again for your consideration, if this is something that you want to pursue. It shows you the last date of file as well as the date of general election. There's also legwork that needs to be done before we file resolutions. Um, the next couple of slides talk to you about the lid lift ballot requirements, and I'm sorry, I'm speeding this up because I know we're running short on time. All information that just tells you what the requirements are, what they must and do not need to have. Calendar dates for the multi-year lid lift and then what is required on that ballot. Happy to provide any information, additional information on these if you'd like, or, um, you know, to schedule a one-on-one time if necessary. So House Bill twenty fifteen is the local sales use tax option. Our recommendation is to utilize the entirety of the House Bill twenty fifteen funding to fund the public defense case load standard. If that is not backfilled in some manner by the Supreme Court or by the state.
And the reason for that is simply because that's a significant. Liability that's coming in the future for multiple years without, at this point, any additional funds identified.
That is correct. The information is now posted on, um, CJTC's website, but it's not open for application. So there's still, um, documentation and verification of eligibility required, even if the board imposes. The one-tenth of one percent sales tax and does not choose to do the grant option. So, um, actions, the, we're asking the board for a motion to disallow requests made through the duration of fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Through amendments and/or off-cycle requests that have a negative impact to the general fund. As well as implement a hiring freeze, restrict non-essential spending on travel and training. And suspend new program development and associated costs through the duration of twenty twenty-five and beyond. Our next steps, that staff will, in accordance with the resolution fifteen nine thirty-two, um, prepare. Budgets that are balanced and will work with offices and departments on what those target, uh, the targeted approach to reductions looks like. And, um, we will continue to plan what a levy lid, lid measure looks like. Or potential action under House Bill twenty fifteen, under your direction.
Now, this board act, motion is, the context for this is, as we continue to get through the year. We are, we are having a, a fund balance issue towards the end of this year. So we're going to start to give targets and work through that. It doesn't make sense for us to continue to add to the problem that will only be compounded in twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I'll make that motion, uh, make a, but the next steps are not necessarily part of that.
No, no, those are.
It's a mo- motion to disallow, I'm, I move to disallow requests made through the duration of fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Through amendments and/or off-cycle requests that have a negative impact to the general fund. As well as implementing a hiring freeze, restrict non-essential spending on travel, training. And suspend new programs and associated costs through the duration of twenty twenty-five and beyond. There a second to that motion? I have a question. Go back to it in a second, um. So. I want to make sure I understand the, that motion. Kind of looking at staff, because this is a staff recommended motion, although I guess it's Commissioner Fornier, ultimately that will clarify his motion, but. Um, when we say requests that have a negative impact to the general fund, so I, I mean, I. Have been approached by a, a particular office where. They're gonna advocate for certain requests. That they've found revenue to support, but it's not like, it's not like that. You know, let's say it's a position, that position's not. Funded by a grant, but more in the aggregate of their, of their shop of business. I want to make sure that that's excluded or, yeah.
Those because.
Do you understand what I, my question?
See, departments who generate revenue, if they're not an enterprise fund, they don't get to keep that revenue. That revenue is part of what comes back because their general fund con, um, allotment is greater than any revenue that they would make. So we have not ever in this county said to departments, if you can make some revenue, then you can get some positions. Because the general fund is still going to be covering an aspect of that. And if a department is up one year in revenue, what happens if they're down the next year? So the, the reality is if, if a department or an office asks for additional positions and the board grants it. That just makes the cut bigger. Percentage continues to go up in twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Every time that somebody comes before us and says, well, we can cover this position with, uh, funds we have in this budget year. They're, they're failing to mention what happens next year. You know, like, so, like, it, no, it's not, doesn't have a negative impact on the general fund in twenty twenty-five, but it. Did we, I feel like we made this motion, like at the last.
You, you did, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So for the build-out of twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're not adding any general fund, but what's happened.
Oh, we're talking about the, the budget amendment for twenty-five?
Yeah, we're talking about for the rest of the year. There's a, a tremendous amount of budget requests coming in.
Second.
Karen Eaton has her hand up.
Yes, Commissioner. Second. Now that I understand.
Oh.
Because I was thinking, I, yeah, I mean, obviously, I felt like we already kind of talked through this.
We talked about it for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah.
But this is right now for twenty-five, from now until the end of the year. The team's concerned that with all the requests that HR's tracking that's coming to the budget office. All it is, is making the whole bigger if, if we present those to the board.
Commissioner.
Thank you. I, I have a couple of questions on, well, just, I mean, I've been kind of just listening to the conversation. I've been. Um, through multiple budget processes before, same as Commissioner Munster, and you know, I. Always say the county budget is, is one of my favorite areas, um, and so, um, I. I guess I understand the intent of the board motion, right? But not having seen like, what is this board motion, like, what is the actual impact that it's going to have? Uh, not being able to see those numbers, like when we're saying. Uh, we're going to restrict non-essential spending on travel and training, like what does that mean? Like, who gets to decide? Like, I just, I have a question, several questions on, on this motion, knowing. Um, and hearing the intent behind it, and then I, I'm also concerned that, you know. We're having all these conversations, but yeah, we still have not had a meeting with, um, all of the elected offices, right? And I, I really think it's important that we, um, start having these conversations with all the elected partners at the county. Um, because, you know, when we're talking about, uh, these big cuts. But also, uh, going out for a revenue piece, I think, you know. Everyone needs to be on board and know, you know, what is coming forward. And, and I know everyone tracks these meetings and everyone's looking in, but I just think that. You know, we really need to have those, those conversations, um, before we kind of keep taking these actions and so. Um. I, I just, yeah, if, if I can have some, some answers to, to those questions.
You, uh, well, should I?
Yeah.
And go to county manager or go to the other commissioners?
I don't mind answering some of those questions, um, so, and, and we apologize if, because we're running out of time. We maybe, we hit this slide too fast without giving more context. Uh, what we're talking about is limiting, um. Spending for the rest of this, uh, fiscal year. So that as we look to build twenty-six, twenty-seven with the cuts, we have enough funding to get through this year. The dynamic wasn't twenty-four, we were going to try to do a status quo twenty-five. Because we didn't think that the revenues were going to be as, as problematic as they were. What we're finding now, and, and, and one of the charts showed it, is we actually have a significant. Mismatch this year as well. So the work that's entailed with bringing, I'll just use the first one here, off-cycle requests. That impact the general fund. That, that recommendation's coming from, we don't believe at this point, being in August, looking to try to pass a budget. We're a day away from giving departments, um, targets. Why would we entertain for the rest of the year, adding any positions that, that have an impact to the general fund? Um, all that's going to do is make the whole bigger. When it comes to non-essential spending. We need to start looking very carefully at, do we have to make purchases, um, are they necessary? And this is a, a bit of a closing of the, of, of the gate, so to speak. So that we are making sure we can finish this year with enough fund balance to pay our bills. Until the effects of the budget reductions in twenty-six take an effect and then. Give us some more space on our operating fund balance. Because currently, we're going to dip below the needed fund balance to even just pay our bills. That's what the double axis chart, which we don't have in this presentation, what we've shown in presentations past. That's where our concern is, is coming from. And if departments can slow down on, if they don't have to go on a, on a tra- a training or a travel. Uh, expense, so that they can revert more money, that would be beneficial for us for the next several months. That's how bad this situation is. So that's where the recommendation is coming. As far as hearing from offices and departments, you will definitely have time to hear from them. Once we give the targets and then they come in and start talking about the operational impacts. I think that there's a little bit of an organizational disconnect right now. We've been communicating for the last eight months, or really. At the end of twenty twenty-four, that we have a major budget issue. So the fact that there's, there's still requests coming in for general fund positions. Um, I get, everybody could use more staff. But now is the time for us to be looking if there's vacancies, to your point, Commissioner Grant, about vacant, vacancy savings. The broad scoped, like thumbnail sketch, and not every position can remain vacant. But there's about six million dollars of vacancy savings right now. If we can. Only hire essential positions that we believe and are necessary, and we can come back and talk in detail about that. With the board, that would help us with our, with the cash problem we need to finish the year. So I get that you did make the decision for twenty-six, twenty-seven. This is us flagging to you that ending the year twenty-five with the few months we have left is becoming a bit of a challenge for us.
Commissioner Klaus, I think.
Yeah, thank you, um. So I understand the concerns, um, that staff have stated. Um, I have a couple of concerns with this motion. The first one being, we didn't receive this packet until twenty minutes before the session today, so having time to think through this kind of emotion. It, I just, I can't vote to approve something without adequate time to think it through. There's also questions that we've heard throughout this presentation for additional information. Um, that I would find really valuable before making such a motion, although the. Information being requested, I understand, will kind of help us with conversations about the next biennium. But in my mind, I still need that information to be able to make an, take an action like this. I also don't know if this motion, I mean, it's kind of a messy motion that has a lot of different components in it. Um, sometimes emergencies come up. If this, like, this motion disallows requests made, it doesn't just explicitly talk about hiring new positions. But it also is generalized and I would fear that this motion passing would prevent us from. Even considering emergency requests that come forward. Um, it also, the motion ends with the duration of twenty twenty-five and beyond, so it's like an indefinite motion and it's not concrete. And I also don't know if it's a legal motion because disallowing requests made. I mean, departments and offices can come forward with requests and we can determine ultimately if those requests are approved or not. So telling staff, whether it's elected offices or departments, that they can't make requests. I know in the past, some departments and offices listen to that and some don't. And the unfair advantage that could potentially be given to offices and departments that just don't play by the rules. And come forward with requests anyways, is something that kind of can be concerning to me, um, because some. Some needs won't be conveyed to us because staff and, you know. Yeah, elected officials and staff aren't going to come forward with requests, but we need to know if emergencies come up. So I think that we should allow for requests to be made and that doesn't necessarily mean that we will approve them. Chances are we won't unless it's an absolute necessity and emergency. But I think this kind of emotion hinders staff from being able to do their jobs and, um. I'm, I was kind of quickly trying to find the state statute, but I can't because I haven't had time to look it up, um, before the meeting. But I'm pretty sure that, um, state law allows requests to be made. Off-cycle requests to be made, because it's ultimately up to us whether we approve them. So I'm not okay, I'm not in a position where I would be okay with approving this kind of a motion today.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant, and then Commissioner.
Yeah.
Eleven thirty-six stop, we saw.
Yeah. Oh, I, and I, you know, so I would, I would just say, I have, uh, I'll echo what Emily said, that I have concerns about getting a packet. Twenty minutes before and then, and then having to make a decision, so that's just a non-starter for me, um, but. Uh, I didn't vote on the last one either, um, and, and I just want to, um, I want to make sure that. And, and I just want to, I want to make sure that for this, that when I think about, my biggest concerns around this motion is that we do not have definitions for any of these things. So in the past, my experience, when we make a decision about a hiring freeze, we would review a list of positions and we would decide what is a non-essential position? What is a central position, which is direct care versus non-direct care? Who is like, you know, are we still, are we not going to be hiring our equity manager? Are we not going to be hiring, so we're stopping, right? So that would say that, it would mean that if we're, we just implemented this motion as it, as it's written, it would mean that we wouldn't be hiring a board of health director and we wouldn't be hiring an equity manager because we'd be freezing our hiring.
Better health is not a general fund.
Okay, I mean, but so, so I'm just kind of like laying out, I'm just trying to give it a perspective. I, I would like to be able to be able to see who we're, you know, who, we should be able as a group to decide, you know, who we're going to be doing. And then what is non-essential as a definition when we talk about spending on travel and training? You know, some of us are, are going to the NACO conference. Does that mean that we're going to decide that we're not going to do that? Are, you know, we spend money all the time on, on food and all of these things. And so I just want to make sure, and then it says suspending new program development. So that would mean to me, when we say suspending new program development, that the direction that we were, that we gave to start to give, spend staff resources and time on the new potential Gray's Harbor Sports Park, that would be suspended because that's a new program that we would be moving towards. And so we shouldn't be spending staff time on that would be non-essential. The other thing that I would say is like, you know, Ty and I are working closely on the jail issue. That would be a new program development, we would have to say to the, to the jail. You know, it's, it's, it's kind of, we need to define these things. It can't just be all or nothing. And if it is all or nothing, then it means that, that, you know, for me, it's very much so. The commissioner's office has to follow all of those rules as well. Like I have, you know, so I, that's where my concerns.
We go to Commissioner McHie and then I'll circle back to the manager.
Thank you. Yeah, no. Kind of for me, like where I'm coming from this is that, I, I mean, if we are going to go out to the voters, I really believe that we really need to bring our elected officials along for all of these decisions and for there not to be any surprises or and, you know, I understand with, with budget documents, that's always been, you know, we always receive these before meetings. That hasn't changed since I've been. And, you know, just because of the context of, of budget documents, I remember Commissioner Edwards, you know, griping about this as well, like that's, you know. But I, for me, I just feel like, as, as we're moving forward, these kind of decisions, I, I really think that we need to have a meeting with our elected partners before we continue to make, make these decisions. But you know, I, again, I, I see the, the intent behind it. I, I understand it. I understand what staff is trying to get at and trying to cover that, that budget hole. But I I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of on, on the fence about this.
Yeah. I think that the board has raised some, some great questions here. I think what we can do is refine this, make it more specific. We're not after, what, what we're not looking for is a blanket. We're looking to try and target what are, are the best things we can do to reduce our spending so that we're in a better place at the end of this year. That's what this is intended for. We do know that there's a lot going on right now in the county. And so the goal is not to pressurize you into making a decision. We can do some of that, maybe have some conversations with individual commissioners on some of the specifics. I'm just offering this, I know there was a motion and a second on the floor. But as an option, we can bring this back next week and have a more detailed conversation.
I would appreciate that. I think there's good questions been raised by the, I will sup- I'll say, I will support some iteration of this, but I think enough good questions have been articulated that I, I would think that your proposal makes sense to me. Commissioner Fornier.
Yeah, it, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's simple to me just because I, you know, I, I think in terms of like triage. And when there's a fire, you put the fire out. When somebody's bleeding, you stop the bleeding. We need a motion that stops the bleeding. I, I, I hear what everybody's saying and, you know, massaging this, making it work is something that I would prefer over the motion failing and the wrong message being sent. Even if, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's about, for me, it's about moving this conversation along and, and figuring out a way to stop, stop the bleeding so that we can assess what's going on. We can, you know, move forward without, you know, making, you know, without continued losses. So I, I will withdraw the motion and ask, you know, and I hope the staff would take that, take that back as, as kind of a, you know, non-direction, general direction to, to take the food back from the mission and, and massage this a little better to something that is, that is maybe more specific. And, and then, you know, maybe the outreach can occur or just watching this, watching this, this meeting will allow for the elected officials to kind of know where our heads at and what we're going to be talking about in the, in the near future. But with that, with that in mind, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
I can't remember Robert's rule, but if the second has to agree to that, which I think they do, then I will agree to that.
Yeah. We, we appreciate the situation that the county's in. And I think it was good for us to get this out there conversation. But we definitely are not trying to pressurize the commissioners. Well, great, great perspectives raised. We will know that focused in so that we can be ready, maybe next week, to have a conversation with, with a more narrowed focus on that. Our goal is not to hinder operations, but to get through this year with the needed fund balance. We'll probably do some, well, we'll do, we'll have a conversation about what that looks like specifically, so we can know what the.
I would say for me, of all the things that were raised, Commissioner Grant's point about the hiring freeze, I, I'd like to know more detail about that piece.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we move on to the last item? Pack Mountain Interlocal Agreement is the last item on the agenda. And we worked it, this through an email and.
Is it in here or?
App, I think, was circulated as well.
Yes, yeah, right here in your packet.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I reviewed this, it was like a week ago. So, but it, there isn't any, like if you, the one thing that you can look at, if you have a copy of it there, I think, do, is that nothing's really changed from the last time, really long there, the edits. It's just more or less outlines our, our role, our agreement with the other, the other.
And I had.
Louis, Gray's Harbor, Pacific and Thurston and what our agreement is and how we all have a, you know, how we make decisions as far as the things go when we get together, that's it.
Went through the high-level look, commissioners, it, it looks a lot like the changes are just formatting.
Yeah.
So.
That's why I was like, it's nothing, it's just a formality.
We've had a long partnership with Pack Mountain, enjoy that partnership and it benefits the region.
So do we do legal review on these types of agreements?
Like, I don't, like, my understanding or just past practice with any ILAs and contracts that I, I would want to know that's been reviewed by legal. And sometimes that just means if it's reviewed by legal, then it's covered, then we're covered by insurance. And if they never touch it and they never look at it, then if something goes awry, then sometimes insurance policies don't cover the contract.
Don't believe this has been sent to our prosecuting attorney, but we absolutely can.
Then so can we, do we need a formal action on this?
Yeah.
So can I, I, I move to approve this ILA, ILA as written, once reviewed by. Oh, yeah. Once being approved or reviewed by legal and as long as there's no issues, then we would approve it.
In our local comments, we mentioned to see this through the AIS process.
Oh, so this would come as an AIS?
Yes.
Which does have legal review.
It would go, if the board provided direction today to move forward with the ILA, we would send it to legal, get all of the approvals needed and then process it through an AIS. So it'd come on a Tuesday, 2 PM, board agenda.
I'm going to make that motion.
But so I withdraw my motion that I just made.
You didn't get a second.
Yeah, so and then, and I move to approve this through the AIS process. And I think that's what I was going to say, right?
Sure, second.
Early needs job.
It was clarified, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so a motion and second, any discussion? Hope for the vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask that? We tried to get it passed through on a Tuesday before the 18th of September. That's what they kind of pushed us on.
Well, what we'll do if, we'll try to add it to the meeting on the second.
Okay. Good, perfect.
Okay, that's the end of the agenda, we're very.
Thank you for your.